Welcome everyone to the final budget hearing for the town of Ocean Ridge. Tracy, could you call the order please?
Commissioner Ascoff?
Present.
Commissioner Bonfiglio?
Here.
Commissioner Cause?
Present.
Commissioner Lucibella?
Present.
And Mayor Pugh?
Here. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, getting right to we have the presentation discussion of the budget and proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2016-17. Does anybody have any questions for the town manager to begin?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just for, for the record, you all have a single sheet in front of you called FY17 Budget Document Correction Note Sheet, which is important to note because it illustrates a couple of corrections that have been made to the book that would impact. One is just a deletion of narrative copy, but the other, one, two, three, four items that are listed there are amount changes for the budget that address some of the questions that were raised at the last meeting and they net result to $108,813 that can be re-appropriated, assigned to something in the budget, or eliminated altogether, reducing the total proposed budget from the advertised budget summary and tax rate that is in the Palm Beach Post and related legal ads. If you'd want, I could go over those or...
Well, yeah, let's see where you say general fund reductions from recalculations requested. So are we removing that from the expenditures or are we putting it into the...
It was double counted. It was in capital projects and it was in the expenses, Jim.
Right, these are expenditure reductions.
All right.
Based on some of the comments.
Well, go ahead and point them out to us where they are in the...
Okay. Well, the first one is just a Scrivener's error, which was just a removal of a small section of paragraph that wasn't caught in the publication. The second one on page 13, which is under the budget workbook, Police Department Budget and Related Totals, where they apply, is under the Machinery and Equipment Budget. The FY16 at 10 months or the year-to-date working columns that we have there show an expended balance of $207,019. That amount will be reduced by $76,829.94 for the Phase 1 purchase of county-compatible radio systems already expended in this fiscal year. That'll be moved by journal entry to the Capital Fund 302, reducing the capital fund balance by same.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay, so, because I'm looking at, so fiscal year 16 at 10 months is where it says 207,019. So at fiscal year 17 budget is...
The budget is separate from line item, the next item, which will be under the FY17 budget, which has the second phase or the $80,000 listed in there for the second phase of the radios. That also, I think Mr. Commissioner Lucibella pointed that out earlier at the last meeting, that that is also shown in the capital transfer budget. So it's essentially was counted twice and that is eliminated out of line...
If I may, the $76,000 isn't going to affect your budget. It's going to affect your closing entry to the Capital Projects Fund.
Correct.
Because it is from this year, so it's only going to affect the way you closes. However, the other numbers are going to change all your numbers in the budget. You understand that?
Yeah.
I mean, you take $80,000 out of expenses and all numbers change. Not every single number, but it changes your, if closed through in different places. Go ahead, Jamie, please.
That's correct. Then another exercise that you had asked me to do in the creation of this document was to recalibrate all the salaries and related multiplier line items for that. And in the police budget, that created a savings of $25,857. If you jump down under the Town Manager Administration Budget, that only created a change of $283. In the Town Clerk and Treasurer Budget, it created a change in terms of positive of $2,364. And under the Public Works Budget, it was a $309 change. So those at the end on the backside of your sheet, if you add those up, those adjustments as they affect the FY17 line item, the amount that could be reassigned, appropriated to capital or eliminated altogether is $108,813. Because we advertised the previous amounts and that's, and in the ad that ran, that was for a 2.2 increase over last year's budget. If hypothetically this were reduced by the commission, that would change that percentage to a lower amount over last year's budget. If, if all of those items were just eliminated versus reassigned or put to capital or what have you. And then the, the other one Rich pointed out is that the capital balance, the capital fund balance will be reduced by the amount already expended for radios this year.
How are you going to make that entry? How do you, how do you close that capital balance physically?
Well, that...
Do you do a journal entry?
Yeah, there'll have to be a journal entry transfer and that, when that was expended, it should have been posted to the capital fund.
Correct. It should have been posted. That's fine. That's just a mechanical error that can be done and it can be done a lot more simply if you simply write a check from the Capital Projects Fund to the General Fund. Who's been doing the journal entries?
Well, the clerk's office does some of them. The bookkeeping office does the, the entry. And quite often, something will be paid out of the General Fund and then divvied up or reassigned after the fact to put it in like places.
Right, that's not unusual. That's not unusual, Jamie. What I'm getting at is if you look at the balance sheet, somebody did a journal, a couple of journal entries here.
What page did you go to?
The balance sheet doesn't have a page, Commissioner. It comes right after...
It's right after the budget summary.
It's right after the millage, a couple of pages after the millage chart. And it's difficult, I understand it's difficult to get through this when they're not paginated, but it's impossible for them to paginate these because they're coming from, they're different reports. And I understand that also, in fairness to Jamie. But, so if you're on that balance sheet, you'll see that the City National CD has a balance of negative $500,000. The prepaid insurance premiums are negative $25,526. You can't have a negative monetary asset in accounting. So I'd like to know who did that journal entry that brought this to minus $500,000? And the reason I ask is that I don't think we should be doing journal entries. For instance, the Capital Projects Fund, it's where we're getting ourselves into trouble. Write a check. Write a check from Capital Projects to the General Fund. You'll get in no trouble with your, with your accounting system. I believe in these two cases, a half a million dollars and $25,000, somebody did a reverse, did a double journal entry or a reverse journal entry because our balance sheet is off by that amount. Can you...
I'll have to research who and how that did, how that occurred.
I think it's a half a million dollars.
Is this what you're talking about?
I'm talking, yeah.
Yeah. That's a lot. Can I bring up a point that might help us resolve these issues? Because they could literally go on for days. So I talked to the town attorney, Brian, about this very thing happening that's now happening. And Brian will perhaps state it better than I do, but we can approve a budget today. And then during the course of the year, as errors, miscalculations, et cetera, found, we have the legal ability to amend that budget.
You cannot, you cannot approve a budget that shows expenses which are higher than those that are publicized. And when you correct the arithmetic errors in here, you realize that you are going to be approving a budget whose expenses are higher than the advertised amount. You may not do that. Is that not correct, Brian?
That is.
You can approve a budget that's lower.
Yes.
Not higher. Now, shall I show you?
But don't we zero out in this? So we are at now?
No. Your budget is what's on paper.
Right.
And if what's on paper has expenses that are higher, doesn't, you can zero out all you want, but you've already gone to press. You may not, you can have expenses that are lower. If I may, let me explain to you. Let's go to, we'll make this thoroughly short. Let's go to page three and page four of the budget. Go to page four of the budget. You see under General Government, the Town Clerk and Treasurer's Office?
Yep.
$316,914, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Look at page eight of the budget. What is the correct number? The correct number is not 316914, it's 307034. Okay, so there's, there is about $10,000 out of budget there because this bottom line on page, on page four must be 6413611 and no higher. That, that is she who must be obeyed right there. Okay? So we've, we've got a, a amount here that was, was put at 316, it's only 307. That's a, that's a good thing. That's, that works actually a little bit in our favor. But the problem is, is that under that you see transfer to Capital Projects, $80,000. You're not transferring to Capital Projects $80,000. You're transferring to Capital Projects $180,000. It says so, well, actually, you're transferring to Capital Projects $194,900 in the narrative. On page four, you're transferring $80,000, but on page 22, you're transferring $180,000, which I believe is the correct number. Okay? So when you change that $80,000 to $180,000, what you come up with is a budget that is out of balance by about $90,120. And you can't, your expenses are $90,000 over your income.
What you've advertised, right?
Pardon?
What you've advertised.
Correct. So I will give you a solution to this. Otherwise, I'll stand down. I will give you a solution to this that allows us to pass a budget tonight. And that is if, if I have the commission's agreement that after the budget is passed, we're going to schedule a budget amendment workshop, at which time we'll get to do our work because we have work to do on this budget that we have never done in all these meetings. We have never talked about how we wanted to spend capital project, capital fund money other than the extra $100,000 for paving. We haven't talked about, our townspeople have been demanding license plate cameras. It deserves an airing and like that. So I'll tell you how we can get this in balance and get it fixed. But I expect that we're going to immediately then schedule a budget amendment workshop. It's up to you. I've got, I've got almost as many hours as you need into this, Jamie. I really do. I've got a lot of hours into this.
All right, so...
Tell us.
If it's not...
What's that noise?
Somebody's radioactive.
Somebody's radioactive. Okay, in a minute, yeah.
Agreed.
All right, so how do we get this thing to where it needs to be?
Do I have your agreement that we're going to have a...
Oh, we're going to have to.
Okay. Let's go to page two. I'm sorry, page three.
Of the budget.
Page three of the budget, of the regular budget. You've got an inter-fund transfer there of $180,000. That's correct. What is the $14,900 number? Do you know, Jamie?
Yeah, that's an existing unappropriated budget number that was in 16 that we're re-appropriating for 17.
Okay. And why are you re-appropriating that?
To, to maintain that same earmarked balance for Capital Projects.
Okay. Then what you are transferring into the, into the, you're re-appropriating it. Are you re-appropriating the $100,000 in there for pay, for payment, paving?
The $180 is being re-appropriated. That's the inter-fund transfer. And then we have, let's see what sheet you referenced.
Wait a minute. You have, you have in the Capital Projects budget, in addition to other things, right now in that account, there is $100,000 for paving. There is $80,000 for radios.
Yes.
For that first fund of radios. Are you adding another $180,000?
No, we're re-appropriating the same amount because it was not expended in F16.
But you're, but then you're not doing an inter-fund transfer. The transfer, it's already there, Jamie. It's already there. You can't, you can't, you can't do an inter-fund transfer of something that's already in the account.
So would you suggest that $180 has to appear under fund balance unappropriated then, on that scenario?
Yeah. If you're, if, if that's what, if fund balance unappropriated refers to funds that are already in the capital account, then yes, I would say you could put it up there. If, if that's what it refers to. I'm not, I'm not a government accountant, so I don't know. So now, what you actually have an inter-fund transfer based on what the commission spoke of is $100,000 because we said we were going to have $200,000 for paving.
But we already have.
Okay? The $80,000 for radios, understand that's going to disappear. It's a wash. It's already been spent and it's going to be paid out to the General Fund. You with us? Right? So if you put anything in there, you have to put $100,000 in, in the transfer. My only concern about that, and that goes to Town Attorney and Jamie, is the announcement. Where is the announcement? I have these labeled. Give me a second. Ah, there's the ad. Okay. The ad.
Yeah, it says 80.
Yeah. The ad said, what we advertised is that we're transferring 80 into the Capital Projects Fund. Now, can we, so we've got a number of different numbers wandering around here. So the question is, can we put more than the 80,000 that we advertised into Capital Projects?
I'll see why not.
Well, you can't, well...
I mean, you got, if you got, I mean, if you can, if you want to transfer that money in there...
Are we allowed to do that?
Yes, I think you're going...
As long as we don't bust a 6413.
That's right. And then we also need to, when we adopt the resolution, if we need to make any changes on that resolution, 2016-12, we need to correct that language on there if that's what we need to do.
Thank you. You can't do over the 64.
So, so the, the changes that need to be made there is that by no means are we transferring the fifth number of $194,900. We're not doing that. That's counting money that's already in there. Right? You see, you see what I'm saying?
I see exactly what you're saying, yeah.
Okay.
So...
Then we would reassign that under the unappropriated balance.
Correct. We can fix that with a, with a bit of sweat. The, so I go back to page three and now I need to, I need to recalculate. So you've got 100 there. Okay, on page four, you're going to change to transfers to Capital Projects. Keep it in line with the, with the damn notice and leave it at 80,000. Okay? We're transferring in 80,000 fresh money. We've got 180 plus more than that for other things, but for those, those projects, we've got 180. So what do you think, Jamie? Leave it, leave the 80,000 correct or leave the 180,000 correct? I'd say move the 180 up, as you said.
Mm-hmm. To unappropriated balance.
Correct. The 80 on page four needs to be reflected on page three, correct? Or am I wrong?
It's listed, well, yes.
See, this is where I get fuzzy and I, and...
Here's where I also list that transfer under, page 22, the whole 180 is called a transfer there, so that would change if we go the under...
Correct. You've got 1949 in the narrative. You've got 80,000 on page four. You've got 180,000 on page 22. All transfers to the Capital Projects Fund. So we need to clean this up. If we look at, let's go to 22 and see if we can make it work there. Transfer to Capital Projects, okay. Change that to 80, right? Change that to 80. We change the page four to 80. We run the machine, we, we fix the clerk's expenses, right? That 316914. We recess, let him do that is what I'm going to suggest, although I'll do it any way you want there. Recess, let him make those changes. Fire up the machine, run the numbers, reprint this section of the budget for us that we can look at it. Because I can tell you this. I would vote, I would vote no to this resolution. I would have to because I am not going to be the, I'm not going to be a commissioner who passed a budget that is not even in balance. It's a, it's a breach of responsibility. So if we can get it reprinted and look at it and eyeball it and cross our fingers that we didn't miss anything and it all looks right, then, then we can be done. I mean, there's, there's a bunch of things in here that are, that are misclassified, but it's not going to change the bottom line, so it's, it's, so that's fine. These are the only things that, that are throwing the budget either out of compliance or out of balance.
Jamie?
Makes sense.
Your take on it?
You want me to run page, rerun page four is what you're saying?
I want you, is the budget...
Wait, 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 wait. It's not what we want. What I'm asking you is, is this going to fix the fact that the advertised number is lower than what we were going to be approving here?
Well, the...
Isn't that, that's where this all started, right?
It will with the money he found. Okay? You needed 90,000. We've got 80 off the bat out of, out of radios that were in equipment and capital. So there's 80.
Which we already, which we already knew about here.
He gave you a listing here of just a $25,000 right there. That'll get you, and then, and then he needs to figure the new plug number because don't forget, it's got to be a balanced, a balanced budget. So on page two, at the bottom where you see 269,000, that is your, your plug number that causes the budget to balance. That number will, of needs, change. Okay? And I, and I assume the software calculates it.
Yes.
This. So what I'm saying to you is if the, these pages, pages one through 23, I assume is produced by the budget software. Correct?
Actually, no, it's all Excel work.
Okay.
I do my own Excel work, but the numbers, the population numbers come from the accounting software.
Okay. So you, but you can just print this section out?
Yes, I can print individual pages from...
I'd like to have clean, full copies of those 19 pages. I think you're going to need it to cross-reference what's going on. And I think that if the numbers come out right, if we get a little bit lucky tonight, we can be, we can be out of here very quickly once that's done. But we need to not look over his shoulder and not breathe down his neck and give him the time he needs to get this done right. Is that fair?
That's one option I would, I would mention.
What is it? Go ahead, Jamie.
We can recalibrate what Rich is talking about there. A question for the attorney, if, if those changes are made, can they be adopted into the adoption of, excuse me, conditional into the adoption of the budget through resolution so that we have time to carefully make those, number one. Number two, in conjunction with the workshop that Mr. Lucibella is suggesting, that can all be checked to make sure that that all lines up correctly.
Well, I mean, I, I can address the, the first part. I think what you're talking about is if we make, if you make the changes that were talked about, what do you can, what, and I, and I'm trying to follow what, you know, what's, what's been said here. What are you concerned that's not going to line up as far as what we have published other than, you know, on the, on the sheet itself? Because, I mean, by statute, you're allowed to, to come in and make changes to the budget and do all of those things provided you do not go above the millage and that you do not exceed the, you know, the noticed budgeted amount. So my understanding is every change that you're going to make is going to be under that. Is that correct?
I, I think though, let me, let me respond. I got a feeling that what Jamie is concerned about, and I don't blame him, is missing something such that we come, the problem is keep, continues to be in the capital fund. So if he comes back here and I see one line item, transfer to the capital fund 80,000, another line item, transfer to capital fund 180,000, and a third line item, transfer to capital fund 194, he knows I'm going to balk because I don't know how that changes the other numbers. He wants to make sure, and I, and I give you, I give you high marks for trying to do this in a measured manner as I am.
That is my concern.
He wants to get it accurate.
With thousands of computations, especially linked computations through 20 some odd pages of spreadsheets, I don't want to adjust one sheet and then find that that creates water balloon effect somewhere else where I tweak it here and then we get another sheet that ends up with an adjustment that doesn't match that scenario. So it needs to be cross-checked among all the places where it would affect.
Okay. And so then the question is, what that...
Well, the question, my concern is to actually execute that while you all sit here and wait is probably asking for error. It can be done, but I'm just, I'm just a little concerned as Richard said, to be measured about it and make sure it all calculates correctly.
I came in, I came in on the expectation that we weren't going to be able to pass a budget tonight. I told you that, counselor.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I am not faulting, I'm faulting Jamie for this, but not for the decision that he's trying to, to force on us right now because I think it's the right decision. He's asking us to wait. If we, if there is a way of continuing this until another date, on Friday, if Jamie likes, Jamie can handle this himself, but if he'd prefer on Friday, I will come in and, and sit and spend the time with them to get this cleaned up, to get the journal entries done. We'll get the capital budget cleaned up with a check. We'll write a check, okay? Make that entry. I'll come in, I'll come in and work with them on this if you guys will give him the leeway to, of, of a little bit more time. I know you're not happy. I'm not happy.
Well, well, let's first, the, let's break it down to exactly what we're, what we started with. What exactly is the problem with the budget right now? Not the transfers of money, but is, where is that problem where what we advertised and what you have here in this budget is wrong?
Your expenses are above what you have.
Let me, let me, Jamie.
All right, we advertised, um... The totals referenced on page four, we have the total revenues and the total expenditures. Those line items add up to the 6413611.
Right.
Matching there. Those totals match what was advertised for the balance budget summary ad with all things considered. So since I continued to do calculations that were requested from the last meeting to the budget, after the ad drop, in other words, the deadline for the legal ad, I did everything I could to maintain those, those totals so that the totals did not change so that we didn't have a scenario where the advertised impact of the budget would be different than what the book said. To the point that was made about the Town Clerk and Treasurer, that total clearly changed between the worksheet page and what's listed in the... between the worksheet page and what's listed in the sum total to the town's favor.
Well, that would, that would be less than, but the point I'm trying to make is where is it more? Because if it's more, that's the problem.
With these two.
So that's, that's really what I'm asking.
Can I ask a non-financial question?
Yes.
This is not my background at all. And the attorney, I spoke to him earlier, so Rich just pointed out there were $90,000 over advertised, right? And then we have the, the added worksheet that was handed to us, and on the back, Rich pointed out that there's $80,000, right? So now we're at 10,000 over, and there's $25,000. So now we're at minus 15, we're under. Now, for purposes, and maybe the attorney can address this, for purposes of approving a budget, we are now $10,000 under. Now, I understand that there'll be balloons elsewhere, but we now have a budget that's 10,000 under advertised.
You can do whatever, whatever you like in that regard, but the fact of the matter is that that was our job, that was our job two meetings ago, to approve a, to approve an expense. So I'm, I'm a businessman like many of you, and, and I'm sorry, but, but my background is in, in finance. And if you, if you attempt to pass this budget as is with a verbal, well, we'll change this and that, that's fine. It's going to be a four, one vote.
No, no, no. Make those changes. Make those changes, the ones you suggested.
He can't make the changes immediately. He's concerned about making the changes immediately.
But we know, the attorney has told us that if they do create budget line items that are inaccurate, we can easily go back and fix those. They're not going to change the overall budget.
The inaccuracies may result in the budget being more than what we advertised. That's the problem.
It can't, but from what Rich just explained.
No.
It could be, look...
They could be. That's, we're not sure of that.
We're responsible for a work product. We are responsible, we are ultimately responsible for the quality of a work product, okay? We are responsible for the staff that we hire. We are responsible for the direction that we give. And, and so what I'm saying is that you can't pass a mishmash like this where you've got, where you're going to pass something where the transfer to the capital projects fund is four different numbers, but we'll fix it later because we're under the total. I mean, how can you do that?
When does our new fiscal start? Doesn't our new fiscal start?
Let me just make a comment for clarification here. Everything is not a straight-line calculation here where something's mentioned in a narrative or where it's shown in a particular context or it's a blending or averaging for a particular worksheet. There may be different calculations going on. So it's possible it's referenced in different ways for that purpose. So for example, the 195 that we just talked about in the...
In the narrative?
In the, no, in the worksheet on page three, which we just talked about really ought to be called a fund balance unappropriated, not an inter-fund transfer. Those two numbers together add up to the 195, which is actually 194.9 plus the $100 interest plug-in that's used as tradition there. So that number is referenced as the total that's being transferred, but then it's broken out in different ways in different places depending on how it's displayed. So that's what gives me pause or concern about, you know, just doing broad brush, moving numbers around or changing the narrative or changing the numbers because the calculations and the application of those calculations aren't done for the same reasons on every page. They're either explanatory or they're parceled out to different functions or what have you. So the movement within line items where it doesn't affect the bottom line, that is either under town policy, an administrative movement under certain conditions, or a legislative movement under certain thresholds in terms of adoption and execution of any of this.
He's right. This is not a column of numbers that we're adding, and you all know that. It's not, it's not just that simple that we fix one of the numbers, check the sum, and we're done. It's, it is a...
I understand that, Rich. I just don't want to be going through this. When's the deadline? We have to be approved by October 1, October 6? The way this is going, we could be here for the next two months. Every time something changes, something else is going to change. Are the sections independent of the program? So if you change one section?
No, no, no. It's, it's a matter of not making accounting errors. There are accounting errors that have occurred here. They have repeatedly occurred, and so your, and so your budget has yet to balance, okay? I don't know who's proofing it, Jamie, okay? But the fact of the matter is, have you ever tried to proof your own work?
Yeah.
If he's proofing his own work, it's still inexcusable what we're, what we're being put through here, but it's, it becomes more understandable. And I just offered to you that I'll come in on my own time. You give me, you give, you give us 30 minutes more of your time and I'll give you four hours of mine, and we'll, and we'll pass a clean budget.
If I'm hearing this correctly, the bottom line is that if we change the numbers so that we come under the, was it 641? That number, then it may affect other numbers such that the budget we pass actually is more than the advertised amount, which we can't do. So I agree with, is that essentially what you're saying?
Well, first, that's a true statement. You cannot go over the total bottom line that we've advertised.
I don't need any more. So in order to accomplish the statutory requirement that we need to accomplish and our goal, I think we have no choice but to meet sometime between now and the first to, and allow Rich to go over this with our town manager and get this done correctly. That's what I think is the appropriate thing to do.
And you will still need a budget amendment workshop sometime thereafter because all we want to do is get this in compliance with what we've advertised and make sure that the accounting is...
Yeah, we need to comply with the advertisement. Then, you know, unfortunately, we'll have to do something afterwards to fix what needs to be fixed. But we first of all need to meet our statutory obligation, which is to pass a balanced budget in conformity with what we've advertised. And I think the only way we can do that is to have time to redo this.
Which you can't do within five days.
Well, actually, I think Tracy had checked with DOR earlier today, and what we can do, we can recess this final hearing. However, you know, we aren't going to adjourn it. We're going to recess it. However, we need to decide at the specific date and time that we are going to meet again because there are certain statutory requirements after we, you know, if we drop an ad tomorrow or create an ad tomorrow for the Palm Beach Post, and then I think Tracy, what, we can drop it on, on Monday? Okay, so we can do that, but then between two and five days, we have to hold the final hearing again. I think you, I think we were looking at earlier, maybe Wednesday or something, next Wednesday, if we, if we needed to do this again. Now, that's, you know, once again, I think we need to come up with a date and time, you know, now if that is what the commission wants to do because we have certain strict advertising requirements that we're going to have to meet. And that would probably be the earliest that we could possibly meet would be Wednesday.
So we not only have to rework the numbers and have another meeting, we also have to re-advertise?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
It's not a full advertisement. It's a continuance advertisement. It's a much smaller notice.
I, I don't think we have much choice.
All right. So...
I love it. I love it because I'm out of town starting on Tuesday. You guys can deal with it.
I don't... All right, so... That we meet it Tuesday morning at 8 o'clock.
We can't, we can't see that's...
I won't be here.
Yeah, we have very tight requirements if we re-advertise, if we continue.
Right. It would have to be at 5:01, you know, probably next Wednesday, 5:01 next Wednesday would be the earliest we could do it because I guess, Tracy, that's the earliest that we can get. Monday is the earliest that they can advertise because that's what triggers everything. So...
And what's the latest we can continue to? What's the trim deadline on that?
You have to hold the, excuse me, you have to hold the hearing within two to five days from the advertisement.
But there's also a trim 101 deadline, 101-day deadline for final adoption.
101 days from July 1st.
And that's October 6, I think. So you're, the window of time there is from next Wednesday to October, excuse me, October 6.
The 28th.
The 28th to October 6. That's the window of time that that meeting would have to take place.
So we can actually adopt the budget after October 1, correct? Through October 6?
Yeah. Last year, last year, the town held a public hearing, a republic hearing in October of the first budget because of advertising complications. You did it in September, and then it was advertised wrong, so it had to reoccur in October.
October 1 is a Friday. Looks like... All right, so if we can do that, how about this? Why, if we're going to recess, if the first October meeting, it would be on the 5th? No, I'm sorry, October 1 is a Saturday. So Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
The 3rd is actually your next, your town commission meeting.
So the next town commission, October 3, that'd be before the deadline. We'd have it before the meeting when we did last meeting, and we do it then. Because I know there's no way I can be here next, this week, next week.
I also have a complication for being available on Friday. So that would be, that would work. Your, what day are you leaving next week, Rich?
I leave Tuesday, and I'm back, I think I'm back Sunday.
All right, so is there a consensus that we recess?
Yes, sir.
It has to be recessed.
Recess the meeting until the regular town meeting, prior to the regular town meeting at 5:01 on October, what'd you say, 3rd?
3rd. October 3rd.
Well, I mean, you, you don't have to hold it at 5:01. What time does your normal meeting start at?
6:30 PM.
6:30. I mean, if you, it just has to be after 5, so if you want it to be at 6, it's...
Yeah, we better.
Hold it 5:01.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, 6 o'clock. Yeah, 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Let's, let's do a separate meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're going to do it at 5:01, October 3.
All right, so do we need a motion?
That's, yes.
Yes, we would need, well, I guess here's the other question too. I didn't know if you wanted to take any public comment while, so I would...
Well, just going to hear the motion and then do the discussion and pull the comment at that time.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Yes, you can. I mean, as long, if you want to take the public comment before you actually vote, have the vote on the motion.
We can.
Is it, okay.
It doesn't really matter.
Well, no, it doesn't because you're recessing, you're, you're going to allow it, but I didn't know, just to make sure that, you know, we got public comments.
No, I always let the public speak, that's for sure.
You looking for a motion?
Looking for the motion.
I'm making a motion. Go ahead.
I move that we recess this meeting to October 3, 2016 at 5:01 PM and authorize the clerk to republish the trim notice in compliance with our discussions today.
Second.
All right, motion's second. Public comment. Come on, Betty.
Betty Bingham, One East Ocean Avenue, Ocean Ridge. It seems that every year we have many of these same problems. What I want to know, does anyone have an outline of what the government actually requires in a budget because every, this isn't the first year we've had some, and Karen would just say that's the way it's done because it's a, which didn't always make it balance. Is there any way of simplifying the thing so John Q. Citizen can sit down, look at it, and tell what is going on?
We have never passed an unbalanced budget.
I didn't say that it was, I didn't mean it was unbalanced. I meant there were things in there that, when you, when you make conglomerates...
Can I respond?
No, I mean, I'm going, I'm going back, going way back.
I think everybody, look, I tried on this budget. I personally liked the way Karen would annotate a budget within each department. The town manager chooses to do it in a, in a long summary in front. That's a stylistic issue that I don't, that I am more than willing to accommodate. I simply want to see a budget that your average 160 IQ resident, of which all of them are, can, can look at and say, okay, I understand where the money's coming from and where the money's going to. And I, and I think we've had it, and I think that in past, we've had that, less so this year, but it's a transitional year.
It is a transitional year, but all I'm saying is what is in the major portion of the balance sheet is frequently defined on other sheets, and that's where it's hard for people to follow the budget.
Where you're flipping back and forth. How do you agree?
Any other comment? Public comment? Any discussion from the commissioners?
I have one question, which the attorney can ask. What happens if we have the same situation on October 3 and our deadline's October 6?
I believe what would happen is if you do not pass what you need to pass by October 6, if I'm not mistaken, you automatically go back to the rollback rate, which, you know, I think you're, what, about 7% above the rollback rate right now? So that's, I mean, we can look at that and see, but I believe that's what would happen.
So that's on your shoulders, Rich and Jamie?
Well, I, can I, let me, I, I have, I, my opinion is, 14 years, I have never, ever had this situation occur. 10 minutes, final adoption, 10 minutes. There's nobody in the audience besides the press. And I got to tell you, to postpone a meeting because of a budget, that, I'm appalled, to be honest with you. I mean, we're at this point, and we, we're still not straight on the number that is going to be, it may or may not be higher than what is advertised, and I have to give it, I have to give a lot of credit, Commissioner Lucibella, because a lot of the things like the salary recalculation, that was huge. It's 29,000, $30,000. Money, money that we didn't have to put in the budget actually came back to the residents of Ocean Ridge. And I got to tell you, if it's not right on the next meeting, in my opinion, there's somebody's going to, there's going to be a problem with your job. And I'm being point blank here because if this budget isn't right, then this is one of the whole reasons why we hired you. And the only reason we have to do this in a public setting, and you sat there and you told us that this, you knew how to do this budget, and here we are again today, doing this again for the third time. I'm not doing, after the fourth time, I'm not doing it again like that. And that's just my personal opinion. I'm upset because I, this shows a complete lack of detail in our staff. And that's all I got to say about that.
Can I make another suggestion? I really appreciate Commissioner Lucibella's volunteering to do this, but have we reached the point where maybe we should bring in an outside accountant to make sure we don't have issues?
I, I would say no because to me, it is the town manager's responsibility to do the budget correctly, and it's on his shoulders.
The only way I would, I would, I'll be honest, Jamie, the only way I would be in favor of seeing an accountant come in to help with this would be at the expense of your job because you, we did grill you on this subject when you came in and you assured us you could do it. He'll get it done. He'll get it done. May still be at the expense of his job, but he'll get it done.
Well, any other discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.